Good evening. This open meeting of the Beverly City Council is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspended the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required. This meeting does not have public access. It's a committee meeting. It's the Committee on Finance and Property and the Committee of the Whole, because we'll probably have 100% or close to 100% of the city council here tonight. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised live, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. And here's the important one, folks. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you. And anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by Council Flaherty this evening to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking is finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. Council Flaherty?
Okay, Mr. President, I'd like to call the Finance and Property Order. My thoughts tonight, and I talked to--
Not to interrupt, Council Flaherty, call the Committee of the Whole also.
Oh, I thought you did that, I'm sorry. Call the order the Committee of the Whole as well. So, everything is put to order here. I want to just kind of lay out some ground rules and see what you are thinking. I want to see what Councilor Rand and Mr. President thinks. Usually, we go line by line, like, for example, like, city council. We go clerk committees, clerks, and elections in this kind of format. I'm not sure if anybody's opposed if we just went to the total city council budget and then went to the total executive part and so on. Do any members of the committee have a problem with that? No? Okay. Mr. Ailes, that's fine to do that?
That'll be fine, Mr. Chairman. On your voting sheet, the bolded numbers are the ones that require a vote. So they're the total columns, but also there are a few that aren't really totals, like the transfers and such.
Right, yep. And then, my thought process on some of the things that aren't so transparent outside, like, transfers, we can start off with. I was going to have Mr. Perry or Mr. Ailes kind of explain some of the things that might be in there. I know in some deliberations, we have talked about some of these, but some of the people at home might not know that. So it was kind of a refresher for the most part, if anybody has any questions. And I'll try to do my best to look at the chat sheet to see if anybody-- I know Paul does a pretty good job with that, to making sure that I recognize everybody who might want to speak. And again, a subcommittee will ask for a motion in a second, and then we'll do a roll call in subcommittee. And just to kind of remember that on-- I'll say at the end of the meeting, on Wednesday at 7:00 o'clock will be a full council vote, special meeting of the city council at 7:00 o'clock, and I'm sure Paul will say that again. Okay, any questions before we move ahead? All right. So, we'll start off with transfers. Mr. Perry, will you please explain some of the transfers that go on in part of that $1.4 million?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, the transfers of $1.4 million, that's the transfers that the administration uses for roads and sidewalks, and that's what the intention of that is. So, that's what the funding is for that. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that line item beyond that.
Any members of the committee have any questions?
Sorry.
Ms. Rand, okay.
Thank you. I've totally forgotten how this works. I'm not sure how that's possible, but yeah, I do have a question. And also, I'm sorry that my 15-year-old son had a very important question about going for a bike ride right at the moment where you started talking. So, transfers are-- I think I heard Mr. Perry say that the transfers are for funding roads and sidewalks?
Yes.
Correct, thank you. And so, I would like to propose that a reduction in that line item by $200,000. And I guess my thought on that is that I really have a lot of respect for-- I believe at our last council meeting, that the mayor made a commitment to putting money aside for inclusion and equity work within our city. And I guess the other thing I want to say is that this budget in front of us is just amazing, and I feel really proud when I talk to Beverly citizens and answer their questions about the numbers. And, you know, when people say things like, "Shouldn't we be cutting the fat?" And I can look at them in the eyes and say, "There really isn't what you would call fat in this budget." And whatever could have been reduced, has been reduced. I think that it was new information to hear the priority of funding equity and inclusion work. And I would like to support the mayor's effort for that. And instead of waiting to see what money gets turned back in free cash in the fall, I'd like to propose a cut to this line item of $200,000.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rand. Mr. President?
I mean, I'll second for discussion, but I'd like to hear the mayor with his thoughts on that one, because I know that he's already committed to funding this in the fall.
Sure. And I thought I was just listening in tonight. Thanks, Councilor. So, a couple thoughts. I'm not sure that this is the way I suggest we do it. What we plan to do is, over the next couple months, have the type of community conversations that'll help us with that. Just what is the right way to proceed with the racial justice and equity initiative, which, as councilors know, may take the form of a department. That certainly was the proposal that was made by one of our Human Rights Committee members, and I think there's some validity there. But we're going to really work through it together to see what's the right way to proceed. My hope is that either we find some grant opportunity that can along the way help meet some of all of the need, and/or we're able to identify amongst multiple line items how to fund it for this year. Two of the larger line items that we can look to, obviously, are the road and sidewalk line, perhaps the reserve fund foreseen line. We also can look to try to go a certain part of the way here with some $5,000 and $10,000 adjustments to different lines. We may do a whole bunch of those and help meet most of the need. I guess I-- I mean, I'm committed, with your help, to work through the conversation and be ready to come forward to the council with a recommendation for some reallocation by the end of summer. The hope being that we could either implement this at the end of the first quarter or maybe somewhere between September 1st and that women-- somewhere between October 1st and November 1st, we'd actually be active with the initiative. But if you take this step, what you're doing is you're actually decreasing the bottom line of the budget. My hope is we're not going to need to cut into the road and sidewalk line that significantly to accomplish this. So, you know, I understand-- I think I understand the thought, Councilor. I might, if you're willing to either-- kind of pull back the motion, or if it doesn't go that way, certainly, you know-- my goal is that we together figure out, A, what the initiative will be, B, ask the council as a whole for support of the initiative, and C, that we'll be able to make it work with some combination of redirection. And on the grant front, we may find a grant opportunity that isn't clear or isn't realized until after we fund it. So, you know, maybe that we've got to find the total amount upfront. I just would think that there's a-- this wouldn't be my preferred way of actually identifying the funds, is to do it now and make the whole cut out of road and sidewalk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand where Councilor Rand is coming from. I do understand that the mayor-- from what I see, the mayor publicly has committed to this. There is going to be a committee to do this, to review this. I understand the importance of what it is right now, but if we can-- I want to say it's premature. The issue is not, but the idea of going to this committee, reviewing it, see what the needs are-- the mayor's committed to doing this, like he just said. So, you know, if come October, November, nothing has gotten done, then we can revisit that. But I think my concern too, although a very important issue, we also have roads and sidewalks that we need to adhere to, that are desperately needed in this city. So I think with the commitment from the mayor, I feel comfortable moving ahead on this. So, we can either vote on this motion, or you can withdraw the motion, or whatever you feel comfortable, Councilor Rand.
Thank you, Chairman Flaherty. I think-- you know, I have a lot of respect for the work that's going to-- that is happening and will happen. And this motion is not to take anyone by surprise, you know, and it's not fueled by any kind of judgment on kind of taking more time to figure out the budgeting piece. But I'm more comfortable being-- using the kind of-- the only kind of power I have as a city councilor to create space for that funding, I guess, to make-- I guess, to make my own commitment to that funding. I can understand that it's not ideal to take it all out of one line item. I really-- and I agree, there are so many roads and sidewalks that need to be done. As Commissioner Collins will tell you, $200,000 of road and sidewalk doesn't get you very far, actually. And I do think it would-- not that it's not worth investing in, but I do think it would get us very far along the lines of our inclusion and equity work. So, I see that the mayor wants to talk. I guess I'll just end with this statement that I'm comfortable taking the vote on that motion, even if it doesn't pass, because I think for me, it's where my power lies, in making that next level of commitment to the inclusion and equity work, so.
I respect that, Councilor Rand. Mayor Cahill?
If I could, I think we're all-- I think-- I don't want to make assumptions for all nine councilors, but I do have a sense that we are generally aligned. So I don't want to kind of force a decision point where some of you might not feel you're able to really express your-- you know, your true intent. Counselor, I think we might be able to do something that's a little bit of a departure off what you're suggesting. If you folks feel it makes sense to identify a dollar amount tonight, and then say we're going to work towards this together, you know-- it doesn't-- my hope is that as little of it as possible comes out of any one line. My hope is that there's some grant funding we can identify along the way to help. I also know that we're not going to achieve all the goals that we need to really set for ourselves around racial justice, equity, inclusion, opportunity, you know, eliminate disparities that minorities in our community and other communities have faced and continue to face. We're not going to identify some of money, you know, kind of press go and feel we've got it done. So this is, in a way, a down payment on a longer, you know, more sustained effort that we-- I think we all have a sense is necessary, and we've got to figure out just how. I don't mean to ramble on you. I guess if-- you know, we've talked about a potential of a commitment of $150,000 to $200,000 in this coming budget. What if we didn't go 200 into roads and sidewalks? What if we went 100 in now? Mr. Ailes, Mr. Perry, you can help me out and kind of warn me off this. What if we identified 50 out of reserve fund foreseen, 100 out of roads and sidewalks, and agree that that may not be ultimately where it all comes from? But if you want to take that vote and decrease those lines, I will-- and I'm not sure procedurally what needs to happen next to get to where we can-- what more process needs to allow for you folks to finish your budget in a timely way? But if you cut 150, I'll resubmit it, and we'll identify a line where we can say racial justice and equity initiative, and that'll be a starting point, if that makes sense to vote. Because I know nobody wants to take a vote that isn't seen as supportive of doing what I believe we all have a sense we need to do.
Okay, there's a motion on the table, and has been seconded. But I'm not too sure if Mr. Ailes or Mr. Perry wants to talk about that. We could sit here tonight, and we can amend that motion, or just go with a $200,000 cut to that line item as long as Mr. Ailes and Mr. Perry feel comfortable with that. Procedurally, we can go ahead and do that $200,000 tonight, and they can figure out where that $200,000 is going to come from. Mr. Ailes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could offer, maybe, a suggested alternative which would allow us to provide a little more insight and a little more review of some of the areas that we've talked about this evening. If we were to-- we can still-- the council can still make this adjustment on Wednesday evening and make those reductions that evening. But that would buy myself, Mr. Perry, the mayor, two days to really go through some things and make sure that what we're proposing is the most thoughtful and responsible for the long term of the budget overall, in addition to justice initiative. Just a suggestion. That's fine if you don't want to do that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second on the table. Does any of the members of the committee have any last words? We can sit there and wait until Wednesday night with the full council waits. Councilor Rand, you made the motion. I mean, for me personally, I could go either way on this. I mean, considering what Mr. Ailes and the mayor has talked about, my concern is reluctant to do this, is that I would rather, you know, get this budget process squared away, so make sure we have money for the appropriate things, for like roads and sidewalks, and then the appropriate thing would be to do for the $200,000 that requested, which is so important, because it could be 100,000, it could be 150,000, it could be 250,000. I'd like to see the committee to kind of decide that, not put it in a box, to kind of an idea what they're looking for. But again, I'm open to the suggestions what Mr. Ailes and the mayor had said. But Councilor Rand, what are your thoughts?
Thank you, Chairman Flaherty. And thank you, Mayor Cahill and Brian Ailes. I really appreciate you thinking on the spot like this. Things are just kind of happening so fast right now, in my life, anyway, that I didn't have the opportunity to check in with both of you leading up to this. And hopefully, Commissioner Collins will not hold it against me that I proposed a cut to roads and sidewalks. So I know he would never. So I like-- I appreciate your response, Mayor Cahill. I think that, and between you and the finance directors' comments, I like the idea of having a couple days for you to have the opportunity to look over the budget and pull out from different places in the budget to come up with the $150,000 to $250,000. And I'd be happy to make that motion or accept your amendments on Wednesday. So I guess that means I would be comfortable-- I don't know the proper term--
Withdrawing your motion.
So I withdraw my motion.
Okay. So with the Councilor Rand withdrawing her motion, we're looking at $1.4 million for transfer. And the thought process that Mr. Ailes and the mayor will look at between $150,000 to $200,000 and cuts or transfers for Wednesday night, and they can work with Councilor Rand, and then Councilor Rand can make that motion on Wednesday night. Everybody feel comfortable with that?
Mr. Chairman, may I weigh in for a moment?
Yes, Mr. Perry.
Thank you. Just another alternative thought. Keep in mind that the whole budget in general is nothing but a big, huge crystal ball. We still not-- if anything, as we discussed, we're not quite sure what's going to happen over the next several months with-- mostly with state aid, and then some of the other areas, like meals and rooms and what have you. So we're really not going to know anything much more by Wednesday night either. We will hope we know a lot more by September. Certainly, we would think state aid will give a clearer picture at that time. And as such, we may get lucky. We, as you know, the administration is suggesting a 17.5% cut. It could come in at 15% cut, or 12. I really don't-- nobody really knows that. But what I'm saying to you is, one thought is that, you know, you could wait till September. And if necessary, we certainly can still-- Councilor Rand, at that time, the mayor could come back and ask to cut the roads and sidewalks in September, and you have a clearer picture. Or some other, you know, alternative of other line items could be an option. We may get a couple more bucks on new growth once the assessors are finishing that. It's really early, in my view, right now to be worrying. It's not a finite amount, as I discussed with a few of you. I'm fairly confident, and I know I could work with Mr. Ailes, I do believe we can come up with a funding for this. And the need to do it even Wednesday, and I don't think it's necessary. The mayor has given a commitment publicly. He's going to come back to you for a proposal on that. And I don't think the funding is the biggest problem right now, at least in my professional opinion. I think we can resolve that come right after Labor Day. So, having said all that, again, it's certainly-- you know, the council's choice on what it wants to do. But I want to make sure the council understands you have options beyond just Wednesday. I can assure you that the roads and sidewalks money will not be spent by September. I talked to Chairman Flaherty today a little bit about this. We also have a Plan B, in case we get into trouble. And I think we were talking something like half a million dollars. Half a million dollars for clawbacks if we had to in roads and sidewalk. There were some funding opportunities also in public services, for capital improvement, capital expenditures, I mean, that we could also attack as well. So, my view is that-- my view-- I'm sorry about the phone. My view is there are opportunities. My instincts tell me we can do this and be more informed if we waited till September. And that's just my thought process to all of you.
And Mr. Perry, we did talk earlier about the Plan B. My concern, not with any kind of spending moving forward, waiting till we free some money, for lack of a better word, until December or January, so we could get through, hopefully, the fall, when there's supposed to be a second wave. So if there is a problem, we're ready for that. But I don't want to speak for Councilor Rand, but I think she wants to use her legislative powers to make sure that, you know, her voice is heard. She understands that the mayor can come in September and make some transfers, but I think Councilor Rand feels strongly that she wants to make this motion here. She's withdrawn her motion, but make it on Wednesday night, so she can feel comfortable, even though, you know, the committee hasn't met yet. But this is a one time a year that the council can have their voice and say-- you know, in a voting way like this, we can say, "We want, you know, $200,000 to go to this particular line item," or $100,000 to go war for schools, or less, what have you. And I think that's where Councilor Rand is coming from. But I won't-- I'll let her have the last word on this. But again, we can also discuss, or Councilor Rand, the mayor, and Brian Ailes on Wednesday. Councilor Rand?
Thank you, Chairman. I do see, too, that President Guanci was asking to be recognized. I don't know if you want to go first, or I can go.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I'll let you finish, because you made the motion. I'll have Mr. President-- I'll let him go first. Mr. President?
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Yeah, no, I understand-- Councilor Rand's desire to see something happen sooner rather than later. There's a sense of urgency in the community, by some members of the community, to get something done now as opposed to September. So, I mean, I'm comfortable waiting until Wednesday to see what the mayor and Brian Ailes can come up with. So procedurally, would we just accept that number, $1.4 million for a transfer, and then take your suggested cuts-- the mayor and Brian Ailes' suggested cuts on Wednesday? And then Councilor Rand could make those motions on Wednesday?
Correct. So what I'm going to do-- I'm going to-- I'm sorry-- Councilor Rand, finish up, and then we'll-- I'm going to ask for a motion. Councilor Rand?
Okay. I really think-- I just want to say thank you for the discussion. And really-- I guess I'd like to just say that this is about using my legislative power, but it's really also about supporting the mayor's initiatives too. I think, in a time when building a budget was not easy, to publicly say that you're going to commit funding for equity and inclusion work-- I just-- I think it's also part of my job to support the efforts that the mayor is making that I believe in, that we share values on. So, that's really the other side of my-- motivation for proposing this cut, just to support the effort to create that equity and inclusion department or work, whatever it ends up being. And I do think it needs-- it can happen now, so why put it off? And I understand, Mr. Perry, that we'll have other numbers in the fall, and this could happen in the fall too. But I think it's more valuable for it to happen now. And I really appreciate that the mayor and Mr. Ailes are ready. They've already been thinking about this. So I have no doubt that they'll be ready to do this for Wednesday. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rand.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just-- I just want to-- I apologize. Texting with-- with-- to try to sort out procedurally what and how we would do to accomplish this. I just want to say I appreciate Councilor Rand's effort here, because it really is about making a value statement, which is what budgets are. And, you know, I'm not going to pretend that we were thinking about doing this before, you know, when submitting the budget, or it would have been in there. So, you know, recent events have really highlighted for us that there's work to do, and this is a step. It's an important first step. So, I think that's what-- that's what really is underpinning Counselor's action, is, you know, the opportunity to make that value statement together. I don't want to stand in the way of it. We do need to sort through procedurally how we will handle this, in terms of bringing it back before you. So I guess that's what we need to work on, you know, tomorrow and Wednesday. And we'll be-- Councilor Rand will be in touch. Mr. President, Mr. Chair, we'll be in touch to try to make sure that everybody understands what our options are procedurally. And certainly substantively, Councilor Rand and I are in the same place on this effort. Thanks.
Good. And I think on Wednesday night, I think it's important that Councilor Rand, when she works out an agreement with the mayor's office, that she makes that motion. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to ask for a motion on a second for the $1.4 million.
So moved. So, my microphone--
Okay. I assume I have to do a roll call vote with the subcommittees as well? So, yep.
Guanci? Rand?
Oh, yeah.
Flaherty?
Yes. Councilor Rand, motion passes three to zero. Next is a city council total budget of $643,856.16. And that includes a city clerk of committees, the city clerk, and the elections. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. President, here a second?
Second, yes.
Okay, roll call vote.
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Yes.
Flaherty?
Under the executive branch. Under the executive branch, which includes the executive branch and the licensing board of six hundred and fifty thousand and fifty dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Roll call vote.
Rand?
Yes.
Guanxi?
Yes.
Yes.
Passes three to zero.
Okay, reserve for appropriation of six hundred and ninety-three dollars, five hundred and sixty dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Roll call vote.
Guanxi?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. On to finance, which includes accountant, informational systems, IT, assessors office, treasurer, collector, and procurement. The total number of three million, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-two cents. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Guanxi?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Passes three to zero.
On to the city solicitors budget of five hundred, I hear a motion for five hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
And second.
Roll call vote.
Guanxi?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Passes three to zero.
On to re, human resources, two hundred and sixteen dollars, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and eighteen cents. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Guanxi?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. On to planning, includes conservation committee and planning department. Total planning department budget includes six hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Guanxi?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion carries the.
Three to zero.
Inspections department, which includes the building inspector, the sale and weight and measures, the city electrician, uh, with a total inspections department budget of six hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Guanxi?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion.
Passes three to zero. Sorry.
That's okay.
I don't know if I'm supposed to say it.
It's a little different, different doing it this way. A little more appreciation for the, for the president doing it on a weekly basis like that. Um, public safety, which includes the animal control, police, fire, emergency management, and havamasa of a total, uh, budget of fifteen million dollars, eight hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-two cents. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Guanxi?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion carries three to zero. Engineering department, which includes engineering and sanitation of two million dollars, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, thirty-eight dollars and six, sixty-three cents. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Roll call vote.
Guanxi?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Yes. Motion approved, three to zero. Public services, which just includes highway, snow and ice, municipal garage, cemetery division, electrical division, parks and forestry, and public property with a total budget of six million dollars, twenty-eight thousand dollars and one hundred and four dollars and forty-five cents. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Guanxi?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion carries three to zero. Under community services, health, council on aging, veteran services, the library, and recreation. Um, I just want to remind people at home too, that I know we're going through these votes as a procedural. Uh, we'll also vote on Wednesday as a committee of the whole. This is a finance committee, uh, voting on this. Um, and we have had deliberations, um, in the past month, um, bringing in department heads and going over each department on explaining, uh, what the mayor, uh, was trying to do in his, uh, uh, budget here for, for this year, or I should say, this is starting in July. And so the total community services budget of four million dollars, two hundred and thirteen dollars, five hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. I hear a motion.
Motion to approve.
And this, second.
Roll call vote.
Guanxi?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion carries three to zero. The next one is the schools, which includes the Beverly Public Schools and also North Shore Regional Vocational Assessment. The total cost is sixty-four million, four hundred and forty thousand, and seventy dollars and no cents. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Guanxi?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. And as for clarification, so the, for the Beverly Public Schools and the North Shore Regional Vocational Assessment was a little over two million dollars. Um, so just wanted to clarify that so people knew what the, what the difference was from the schools. And that, that, uh, that's about, I believe, eighty-nine percent of all the new money that it comes into the city for this year. Um, going on to debt service, um, do I hear a motion to approve nine million, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Guanxi?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries three to zero. Annuities and pensions of motion for eleven million dollars, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, and three hundred and fifty-four dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Here a second?
Yep.
Roll call vote.
Guanxi?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion carries three to zero. Next, we will go on to other, workers, workers compensation, unemployment, health insurance, life insurance, and payroll tax, um, where it equals about eleven, it equals eleven million dollars, nine hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, and three hundred and two dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Roll call vote.
Guanxi?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Next, we're going to, I'm going to ask Mr. Perry to kind of chime in here a little bit. We're talking about assessments. Uh, I just want a clarification on that. And the, the cost is one million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand and sixty-seven dollars. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, traditionally, uh, each year when you receive state aid, we have revenues and then we have, uh, expenditures or bills from the state. Um, and that, that happens every year. Specifically, we have a set state assessments with the state bills, municipalities for various services received. In, uh, Beverly, the following categories of where we receive bills for various state services with, that are provided, mosquito control projects, air pollution, metropolitan area planning council, um, RMV non-renewal surcharges, uh, we are assessed for the MBTA, um, special education certain costs, uh, and then we have school choice sending tuition, charter school sending tuition, and that adds up to the one point seven million dollars and change as recommended. Just to refresh everybody's memory, as you know, we have not received state aid yet. Uh, we don't know what those numbers are. And not only could the revenues from the state change, but certainly assessments can change as well. However, uh, I think the administration properly is using the governor's budget that he submitted in January with the assessments at that period of time. But I just, uh, caution the, uh, council that we may have to come back in the fall. Once we get the final numbers, this may need to be either increased or decreased. We'll see how it goes. But those are the categories, and that's what state assess, assessments are, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Roll call vote.
Guanxi?
Yes. Yes.
Rand? Flaherty?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries three to zero. Now in a total general fund of one hundred and thirty-six million dollars, five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, and four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Chairman?
Yes.
Jim, Jim, if I could just suggest first, you go to the stabilization fund before you go to that. Stabilization.
Okay, that makes sense. Can you, um, go and explain that a little bit of how much money we actually have in there and how much we're drawing down from that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, in order to reach the total revenue amount to get to the one hundred and thirty-six million and change, the, uh, city council will need to draw down on stabilization. We have approximately fourteen point seven million in there. It's, it's a really good story and has tremendously helped the city to weather the storm that we're facing here. In order to get to the total revenues necessary to meet appropriations, the council, by a two-thirds vote when you meet as the whole, will need to transfer one million, fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars. And, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend to your committee that you vote to approve that dollar amount, uh, to the committee as a whole.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion for the stabilization fund, and then we'll go back to the general fund as a whole. Do I hear a motion? Or do I have any questions about that at all? No, I think, Councila, okay. Um, here a motion?
Motion to approve.
Here a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Second.
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion carries three to zero. Now to the total general fund, and it'll do the revenues afterwards. Total general fund of one hundred and thirty-six million, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Here a second.
And a second.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Roll call vote.
Guanxi?
Second. Yes, second.
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, motion carries three to zero. Total general fund revenues of one hundred and thirty-six million, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Mr. President? Mr. President, I hear a second. Roll call vote.
Guanxi?
Roll call vote.
Guanxi? Rand?
Yes.
Anybody?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Read, I heard him.
This is too funny. Okay, um, so we're done with it, with all that. Now we're going to go to the enterprise accounts. We're going to start with the water fund. Um, and as we know, the.
Yes.
Balance each other out. And then we have to also, uh, vote on the, uh, the increase of the rate for both rates. So for the water fund, um, do I hear a motion for five million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars and three cents?
So moved.
Second.
Guanxi? Rand?
Sorry. Yeah.
He's trying to get tough on me. Yes.
Second.
It's not easy.
I know. Um, we'll, uh, vote on the, on the transfers or retain earnings of eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, uh, three cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Guanxi?
Mr. President?
Sorry.
Roll call vote.
Rand?
Flaherty? Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Total revenues of five million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars and three cents.
Oh, okay, no, I got it. I'm sorry. Second.
I guess I'll take that as a second.
A second.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Councila Rand.
Rand?
Yes.
Yes.
Flaherty?
Councila Rand, you might have to take this, take the chairmanship. Go on to the sewer fund of expenditures of eight million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Perry.
Did you vote on the ra, the water rate yet?
Oh, you know what? My, my, my bad. My, I apologize. I said that at the beginning. I wasn't doing, then I forgot that. Um, we need to take a vote on the, um, the rate per cubic, one hundred cubic feet of three dollars and two cents.
Mr. Chairman?
Here a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, just want to point out, council president has left the meeting. I think he's trying to log back in because of his poor connection.
All right. Um, you know what? Um, I think we just continue on. Um, he'll, he'll, he'll join us. Is that okay, Councila Rand?
That's okay with me. Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'll second that. Roll call vote. Roll call vote, Ms. Kent?
For the water fund, is that what you said?
Uh, no, it's for the, uh, increase of the rate, rate increase for the water fund.
Okay, yep. Um, Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Okay, now on the sewer fund of expenditures of eight million dollars, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents.
Motion to approve.
I will second that. Roll call vote.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion carries two to, two to zero. Mr. President is trying to get back in. Um, transfers of retained earnings, um, in FY twenty-one of three hundred and five thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents. Motion to approve.
So moved.
A second. Roll call vote.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion carries three to zero. Total revenues of eight million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Roll, uh, roll call vote.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion carries two to zero. Hear a motion for the increase of the rate of the cubic feet of six dollars and eighteen cents.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote.
Rand?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ju- just quickly, just for clarification, uh, so that the residents aren't confused. The, the, both the water and sewer rates are not increasing this year. They're staying the same. I just want to make sure that the, the, the ratepayers are not confused. The, the rates as proposed by the administration are identical to this current fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. I know we talked about that earlier. Thank you, Mr. Perry. I know we talked about that earlier. That went too fast. So thank you for pointing that out. Okay, the enterprise fund of the sanitation and recycling, the expenditures of $2,600,000. Hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, roll call vote.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion carries two to zero. Total revenues of $2.6 million. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, roll call vote.
Rand? Excuse me, Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion carries two to zero. The recreation enterprise account of expenditures of $496,680.01. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second?
I'm back.
Okay, great. We missed you. Roll call vote. We're on the recreation enterprise account, Mr. President.
Yep.
So, roll call vote, please.
Wansy?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion carries three to zero. Transfers of retained earnings in FY21, $59,130.01. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Wansy?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes. Motion carries three to zero. Total revenues of the recreation enterprise account of $496,680.01. Hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Wansy?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion carries three to zero. Golf and tennis enterprise account, expenditures of $380,000. And if I'm going down here, if anybody has a question, you know, let me know. But right now, I'm looking for a motion for $380,000.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Wansy?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion carries three to zero. When we ever go back, we're in city council chambers, we're going to be asking for roll call votes all the time. Total revenues of $380,000 for the golf and tennis enterprise account. Hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Wansy? Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion carries three to zero.
Yes.
All right, the second to last one, senior citizen enterprise account of expenditures of $42,687. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Wansy?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion carries three to zero. Transfers or retain earnings in the senior citizen enterprise account in FY21 of $11,059.01. Motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second.
Wansy?
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Total revenues in the senior citizen enterprise account, $42,687.01. Motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second.
Roll call vote.
Wansy?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes. The last one before we adjourn financing property. Airport enterprise account of expenditures of $502,488.01. Hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Roll call vote.
Wansy?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion carries three to zero. Total revenues of $502,488.01. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Wansy?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion carries three to zero. Before I adjourn financing property, and I believe I have to adjourn the committee of the whole, if Mr. President has anything else to say. Does anybody have anything else to say in the finance committee, Mr. President or Ms. Rand? Nothing?
I'm good.
Okay. Mr. President, do you want me to adjourn the committee of the whole or would you like to do that?
No, please.
Okay. So just a reminder that on Wednesday night, the committee of the whole, we just met as finance and property. We had some good discussions at the beginning and we will meet as a committee of the whole on Wednesday at 7 o'clock, right here on your favorite channel. So I'm asking for a motion to adjourn financing property.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Wansy?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Motion carries three, zero to adjourn financing property. Do I hear a motion to suspend, adjourn the committee of the whole?
So moved. Second.
I love that. Roll call vote.
Yes. Feldman? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Wansy?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you, council. We'll see you all Wednesday night. And councillor Rand, you will work with the mayor's office and with Mr. Ailes. Thank you. All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.